And I'll declare the meeting open. This meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. All parties should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council offices. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings and briefings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. I'd now like to invite Uncle Richard Edwards from Minderiba Local Aboriginal Land Council for the acknowledgement of traditional landowners.
That'll be an acknowledgement to country in our reclaimed language to start with, and then I'll say something in English as a welcome. Okay? First, I'd like to say congratulations to the new mayor. The reason it'll be an acknowledgement is because the three linguists that are bringing our language back for us haven't found a word for welcome as yet. People were using the word ana gunya as a welcome for Wunnerua language, but the three linguists pulled that word to pieces and it actually means what are you doing here? So we might use that one. Here we go. Now, in English, that means we acknowledge the Wunnerua people, traditional keepers of this land, and we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. Now, I'd like to ask just for a minute's silence for that, for the elders past, but while that minute's going on, I'd like just to think about your own ancestors, where you came from, and also have a bit of a think about your own family and the sick ones amongst your family as well. Thank you. You got it, watch? Thank you. And the reason our language has got to be brought back, by the way, is because it's the only language that's ever been banned in Australia, it's the First Nations language. Thank you.
Thank you, Uncle Richard. We'll now have the opening prayer. Please stand. councillor Mason.
Most gracious God, we pray for the council of the city of Cessnock, its members and officers, direct our work and influence our decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you councillor Mason. Before we get started, this is typically the place where a merril minute would take place and I just wanted to have a quick opening statement instead. Good evening councillors, staff and members of the public. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to all newly elected and returning councillors. I sincerely look forward to working together as a team to serve our community. While we all come from different backgrounds and walks of life, I know that we all share the common ground of wanting the absolute best for our community. While we always will have spirited debate on different matters, I know we can always find common ground and that is for the advancement of Cessnock and the betterment of our CBD and our city. I also just want to take a moment to acknowledge and thank former mayor Jay Saval for his leadership and contributions during the last term. Thank you for all of the contributions you made during your time as mayor of Cessnock. Thank you. To the people of Cessnock, I am deeply grateful for the trust and support you've placed in me. It's an absolute honour to stand here today as your mayor. I promise you, and really this is the only promise I can make, is that I will always aim to do my absolute best in this role, advocating for all residents of our local government area without discrimination. No matter who you are or where you've come from, your voice matters and together we will collectively work toward a better future for everyone. As your mayor, I will lead with empathy, transparency and a commitment to serve every corner of our great region. I look forward to working together with all of you to create a Cessnock we can all be proud of. Thank you. Now, moving on to business. Are there any apologies, leaves of excuses to make? No apologies? Moving on to item four, disclosures of interest. Any disclosures of interest to declare? No disclosures of interest? Okay, moving on with report CC 63/2024, deputy mayor. Now, we're going to do something that's... We will vote on the recommendation in Sariotum. So what that essentially means is we'll vote on each individual item in series, on separate dot point items. So for the first dot point in Sariotum, that council votes on the recommendation, so that council elect a deputy mayor for a term of office for 12 months? So could I get a mover for point one? Councillor Hill? And second, councillor Jerd? So we're moving to, for council to elect? Yep. So is there any debate with this? No debate? No discussion? Okay, dot point one. So we're going to vote that council elect a deputy mayor for the term of office by open hand? So all for dot point one, as on the paper? It's unanimous? Can I get someone to move the next point? That council elect a deputy mayor by open voting? Moving that way, councillor Madden, second councillor Lee? Yes?
...of office for the election of a deputy mayor and the remuneration? Sorry, I think we did jump ahead there a little in the order?
Sorry, it was different on my paper. Okay. So mover and a second, the council elect a deputy mayor for the term of office for 12 months and set the fee applicable to the term of appointment for $1,200. Mover? Councillor Jerd, second councillor Madden? Any discussion? We'll now vote on the matter? All in favour? It's unanimous? Next point? Can I get a mover on point three? That council elect a deputy mayor by open voting? Councillor Hill, second councillor Grine? All in favour? It's unanimous? And last... Yeah, I'll now hand over to the general manager to conduct the vote.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There has been two nominations received for the position of deputy mayor, councillor Mitchell Hill and councillor Jessica Jerd. We will now vote for councillor Mitchell Hill by a show of hands. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. We're now vote for councillor Jerd. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. Is that councillor Hill has seven votes, councillor Jerd has six votes, councillor Hill is the winner for the new position of deputy mayor.
Moving on to that final dot point in the recommendation, that council note the declaration of returning officer that councillor Mitchell Hill is elected as deputy mayor for the term of office 17th of October 2024 to the day prior to the ordinary council meeting in September 2025. Can I get someone to move that way? Councillor Grine, second councillor Saval? All in favour? It's unanimous? Now, moving on to report number CC 64/2024. So this is to do with the local government's election? Okay. Can I have a mover on that one, please? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I would like to move the recommendation as written, that pursuant to section 291a1b of the Local Government Act 1993, the Act, Cessnock City Council declares that casual vacancies occurring in the office of a councillor within 18 months after the last ordinary election of councillors for the council on 14th of September 2024 are to be filled by countback of votes cast at that election for the office in accordance with section 291a of the Act and directs the general manager to notify the New South Wales Electoral Commission of the council decision within seven days of this decision.
Do I have a second on that, please? Councillor Grine? All in favour? Oh, sorry, speaking? Speaking? Any discussion on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'll try to keep it nice and brief. I think that the option there we have for the countback to resolve a vacancy in civic office is the most appropriate. I think financially and logistically, the cost of running a by-election is considerably higher than running a countback and I think it's in the council's best interest to fill those casual vacancies via a countback.
Thank you councillor Hill. Any further discussion? All right, we'll put the motion forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Okay, moving on to report number CC 65/2024. Can I please have a move on the recommendations? Councillor Madden? Oh, speaking councillor Hill?
Oh, sorry, no, that's all right. I was just going to move it, but if you're, I'll move it if you like?
Yep.
No worries. I'll, just for the benefit of the gallery and those watching at home, I'm happy to read the recommendation. Now, one, that council delegates the functions, powers and duties in accordance with the instrument of delegation to the mayor attached to this report as enclosure one. Two, that council delegates the functions, powers and duties of the mayor to the deputy mayor with the general limitations that the deputy mayor may only exercise these functions, A, at the request of the mayor, or B, if the mayor is prevented by illness, absence or otherwise from exercising these functions, or C, if there is a casual vacancy in the office of mayor. Three, that council delegates the functions, powers, duties, authorities and appointments in accordance with the instrument of delegation to the general manager attached in this report as enclosure two. And four, that council authorises the director of planning and environment, director works in infrastructure or director corporate and community services to act in the capacity of general manager in the absence of the general manager during periods of leave as nominated by the general manager in each instance.
Do I have a second? Councillor Saval? Any further discussion? Councillor King?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually like to propose that we push this...
Sorry, councillor King, are you proposing an amendment?
Yes. No, sorry, I wanted to defer this motion to the next council meeting, so councillors have an opportunity to get a briefing around some of the specifics and what it actually means around the delegations. I note that section 380 of the Local Government Act 1993...
Just a moment, I'll just have to pull you up right there, just one second. Councillor King, director?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. This is procedural motion and we've only got a mover at this stage, we need a second before you can actually talk to the procedural motion and then it actually needs to be dealt with.
And seconded? Procedural, yeah. So councillor Jerd, seconded? Okay, go ahead councillor King.
Okay, so I'd just like to explain to everyone why I feel that it needs to be deferred to a next meeting up until such time that all councillors get a bit of a briefing. So in the enclosure that I believe everyone's got, enclosure number two, general managers' delegations, page eight, section six, during a recess period, the general manager have authority to accept all tenders. Page 11, part C, the tender value is $2 million. So I believe that's a change from the last term where it was at $1 million. So to me, that's a 100% increase in the value of that tender. I believe there's...
Councillor King, we might vote a procedural motion, so we might vote on deferring, if that's okay with everyone?
Yep.
Yep. So could we vote on that matter of deferring this report until the next available council meeting? Yep, fours, so we're voting four. So councillor Dixon, Harrington, Jerd, King, Mason and Watten, those against. Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Palmauski, Pascoe and Saval, they declare that motion is lost. So we're going back to the original motion, debating the original motion, please. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'm happy to just reserve my right of reply on this matter.
Sure. Speaking councillor Jerd?
Thank you, Mayor, or Mr Mayor. Is there a way to actually make an amendment to change the amount from $2 million to 1.5?
Have to put that forward as an amendment? Director?
Thank you, yes, correct, Mayor Watten. If you wish to change something in there, it would be an amendment that you adopt the motion with the change to the value of the limit, if that's the concern of the council.
Amendment like that, please.
Would you like to move an amendment? Okay. So you'd like to move the amendment to, if you want, to 1.5?
Instead of $2 million, yeah, instead of $2 million for the tender amount be 1.5.
Okay, do I have a second draw on that? Councillor King? Would you like to speak to that councillor Jerd?
Yes, I would actually, thank you. I believe that the amount of 1.1 million needs to go increase because last term we started to see the increase of the cost of products and stuff, like it says in the report, but to jump to 2 million is quite an increase and I think when 1.5 should be enough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jerd. Councillor Grine?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for the GM, if I could, please. Could you just give me just a little bit of an explanation, general manager, in regards to the $2 million that is being approved under delegation and what that means as far as the tenders? We have a lot of new councillors here and I'm sure they'd be interested to know. And my second question is, could you give me an idea of what perhaps Singleton council give their GM as far as delegation amount? Or maybe Maitland council, what the standard practice is so that we have an idea, especially for these new councillors here?
General manager?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Singleton council's general manager has a $3 million tender approval limit. The delegation for approval only applies to items that the council has already approved for expenditure. Okay, so you vote on a budget and operational plan and you've approved those projects to be delivered. My delegation then is to simply sign off on contracts that come to actually deliver those projects. Excuse me. A lot of the projects these days, we've seen increases in, you know, the cost of building bridges has nearly doubled, the cost of delivering a road base for our roads has nearly doubled. It's, you talk about inflation in terms of, you know, 20% across the board in the last couple of years and the construction industry, it's well over 50%. Simply maintaining the status quo is not acceptable in terms of staff time that it takes to prepare reports and bring up to the council and delays incurred in the approval of those tenders.
Am I right in saying that not giving you the 2 million will delay some of these projects if we have to get reports done to bring them back to council when we've already voted on these projects? And all we're doing is just giving you the approval to sign the cheque?
General manager?
Through you, Mr Mayor, that is 100% correct, councillor Grine.
Thank you.
Councillor Saval?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Grine covered a lot of what I was going to talk about. We received a memo from the director this afternoon, which actually outlines a lot of these things, that notes other councillors like Singleton, that's actually a smaller council than ours, has an approval of $3 million and other larger councils go up to around $10 million for Canterbury Bankstown. What I think the request is at the moment is a reasonable request as outlined by the general manager. This just allows him to sign off on tenders that have already been approved by our budget. So we outline where we want the money spent through the operational plan and this just allows the general manager to do his job. So I am speaking against the amendment moved by councillor Jerd and speaking for the original motion, which would allow us to pass these delegations tonight and allow the mayor and the general manager to operate under their approved delegations immediately.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak for the amendment and the reason is that if you take construction costs as forecasted to rise by 6% year on year after a four-year period, it would result in $1.3 million. So I feel that $1.5 million would be a reasonable adjustment to that amount. And I will also note that Newcastle council just recently decided to keep theirs at $1 million. Thank you.
Councillor Hill, a closed debate, please?
Well, this is not my motion that we are discussing, this is councillor Jerd's motion, my first time to speak on this one, sorry. And just through you, Mr Chair, if I could put a question to councillor King, he mentioned a statistic in those comments there about 6% of the cost of, on year on year of rising construction costs. I just, it seems to be a little bit in conflict in a comment just previously made by the general manager about rising construction costs and infrastructure costs. Is there some more information about where those statistics came from or sort of expand that for other councillors to understand where that 6% sort of was taken from?
Shall I have to respond councillor King?
Yes, sure, any leading economist in New South Wales will tell you that, but this is exactly the reason why I suggested that councillors, especially having eight new councillors here, get a briefing to be able to ask a lot of these questions. I just don't feel comfortable voting on this because we don't have sufficient information. I would prefer to get that information from the general manager himself.
So no further debate on this matter? So we're going to put the amendment forward. Those in favour of the amendment? Councillor Dixon, Jerd, King? And those against? Councillor Grine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Saval and Watten? Amendment is lost. Oh, sorry councillor Harrington, sorry. So the amendment is lost. So going back to the original matter? So? No debate? No further discussion? All those in favour? Councillor Grine, Harrington, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe, Saval, Watten? The motion is carried. Those against? Councillor Dixon, Jerd, King? Yeah, motion is carried. Moving on to the next item. Report number CC 66/2024, appointments of representatives to external committees. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I would like to move a sort of a motion to fill these committee positions and as provided to staff earlier, the first two dot points are as per the recommendation, so I'll read from number two. That council seeks nominations for and appoints councillor members and alternatives to the following external committees for the current council term. I would move that councillor Jay Saval as council's representative to the Ostar Coal Mine Community Consultative Committee and councillor Quinton King as the alternate. B, that councillor Chris Madden as council's representative to the Blackhill Quarry Consultative Committee and councillor Mitchell Hill as the alternate. C, councillor Mitchell Hill as council's representative to the Budai Quarry Consultative Committee and councillor Chris Madden as the alternate. Councillor Mark Mason as council's representative to the Hunter Water Customer and Community Advisory Group and councillor Sophie Palmauski as the alternate. E, councillor Mitchell Lee as council's representative to the Lower Hunter and Hunter Bushfire Management Committee and councillor Sophie Palmauski as the alternate. Councillor Sophie Palmoski as council's representative to the Lower Hunter Zone District Liaison Committee and councillor Mitchell Hill as the alternate. Councillor Tracy Harrington as council's representative to the Public Libraries New South Wales Central East Zone Committee and councillor Sarah Pascoe as the alternate. H, councillor Mitchell Hill as council's representative along with the mayor and councillors Jay Saval, Jessica Jerd, Mark Mason and Tracy Harrington as alternate representatives to the Sydney District and Regional Planning Panels, Hunter and Central Coast Regional Planning Panel. And three, that council authorises the general manager to appoint staff to any external committees that have vacancies following the election of councillors.
Someone a second, please? Councillor Grine? Any discussion? Councillor Jerd?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just quickly on F, when you read it out councillor Hill, you said Mitchell Hill instead of Lee? I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a mistake up there, so it was, it was supposed to be Mitchell Lee? Okay. Yep, no, that's all right, just wanted to make sure. I love all this except for A, I would prefer, I don't know if we can change that if I need to do an amendment on top of your amendment, but I would rather it the other way around. Quinton works in the mining industry and I think that would be a massive asset. Last election, I wanted to be on the...
Councillor Jerd, sorry, just, so you want to move an amendment?
Yes, yep.
Okay, could I have a second? Councillor King? Sorry. Councillor Jerd?
No, can I continue? Yeah, yeah. So last council term, I would have liked... So last council term, I would have liked to have been on the Lower Hunter Zone with the fires. And it was put to me that councillor Jackson actually had a background in fire. And it was seen as she would do a better job, as she would know the industry and know exactly what's going on. I feel like this would be the exact same thing with Quinton, councillor King, if he was to be the councillor and if we had councillor Savile as the alternative.
Well now, any other debate on that first before we move to vote on that amendment? No further debate? Oh, sorry, councillors Savile?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll speak against the amendment just for the reasoning that the Ausstar Consultative Committee is not about actually mining on the Ausstar land anymore. As we know, the mine has closed and is not operational. And so now is in a rehabilitation stage. So this isn't about coal mining or the process of coal mining. This is about understanding, planning and rehabilitation and what they're going to do with the future of that land. And that's a very important site for this council and this community going forward. It's a large amount of industrial land at the moment that will need a future use going forward. And so it's important that we've got an understanding of what that could be and how that could best contribute to our community as a whole. But also noting that it is in Ward A and I am a Ward A representative councillor. And so it has a significant impact to that ward as well. So that's why I would like to stay as the recommended, original recommended councillor's representative.
Councillor King?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak for the amendment. I appreciate that it's not a coal mining operation any longer. But I am very passionate about this because there's a lot going on in the space of the energy market and the net zero targets, it's being said. So I am very passionate about the industry and keeping our industry alive and our Hunter Valley on a whole. So I do have an interest in the end-of-mine life operations and seeing that process through it all. So for that fact, I would like to actually be the person on that committee. Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Thank you. Just sort of to make a comment on the two points raised sort of by councillor Savile and councillor King. I would, for reference of new councillors and staff, and you know, the Director of Corporate may be able to sort of correct me if this is incorrect. But in the previous term of council, councillor Groine and I both served on the two external quarry committees as the primary delegate and an alternate delegate. And in practice, that had very little effect on it, sort of the way that we operated at those committee meetings. Councillor Groine and I both attended almost all meetings together as two councillors and had sort of equal discussion in the room. And in terms of those two committees, there was never many sort of votes that were put. That sort of whether being a delegate was a major concern in the room. And it sort of gave us an opportunity to both attend something that was sitting within our ward and represent sort of the interests of our community as councillors.
Any further discussion? We'll now put forward the amendment for a vote. All in favour of the amendment? Councillors Dixon, Harrington, Jerd, King and Watten against? Councillor Groine, Hill, Lee, Madden, Mason, Palmauski, Pascoe and Savile. The amendment is lost. We now go back to the original motion. Speaking councillor Jerd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, with these external committees, do we actually get minutes back to read?
Yes, we should get minutes from every external committee, just the same as the internal committees.
So I'm just quite concerned, like councillor Savile did point out, this is a massive interest of mine with me being a Ward A councillor as well. And I feel like I would really like to be kept up to date with what's happening with the Auscoal mine because that is where a bypass could go for Wall and By Road. And it's a huge concern of mine that we are not going to get the information. So please hope that we do.
Director?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Councillor Jerd, I believe that those minutes are distributed via the member of council members. But also it is reported back to council usually via a council report at the end of each meeting if they've had a meeting in their previous period of time.
Councillor Jerd? Any question? Yep.
Yeah, just a quick question. Did we have this committee last time? Because I don't ever remember actually getting any minutes from it last time, whether or not I missed it?
My understanding councillor Jerd is these external committees are all ones that have been, council has a representation on for a number of years. The actual, the workings of how they go and the minutes and the like are not actually a council responsibility because the committees are external to council and we have a membership on them. So council's not actually responsible for distribution of minutes or agendas or the like. But they certainly are committees that council has been involved in in the past.
Question councillor Jerd?
Another quick question. The first question I asked, you said we do get a copy of the minutes and then you just said then that external we might not. Is that what you just said?
Director?
Thank you councillor Jerd. I may have said that and if I did, I apologise. The committees are external to council. We don't control the distribution of the minutes or the agendas. My understanding is the reporting back to council is via the members of the council laws that are part of that committee. And it's up to them to distribute or give a council report at the meetings, if that makes sense.
Councillor Pascoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering if there's any way that we can make an amendment to this resolution to add something to say that councillors who are the delegate are required to report back to the council?
You'd like to move an amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. So.
So I'd like to move an amendment that the delegate for these external committees actually provide a report back to council because that way the rest of us who aren't on those committees can still be privy to the information that was shared.
Have someone a second? Just like to ask just before I go to councillor Madden for a question, if councillor Hill and councillor Groine would be happy with that particular amendment? An agreement? Okay, so we'll add that to the original amendment? Councillor Madden, speaking?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'd just like to ask if councillor Pascoe would be happy to add the words delegate and alternate delegate report back to the council?
Councillor Pascoe?
Yes, councillor Madden, that makes sense. Just because obviously we can't all be on every committee. So if we could all share the information, we're all across it.
Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the wording there, what if we changed the wording from report back to the, to provide the minutes from the meeting that are provided by the external committee?
Would you like to move that as an amendment?
Yes, it would.
Councillor Groine and Hill, should you be happy with that? Director?
Thank you. I hate to be a broken record, but these are external committees to council. You would have to check with each of those committees and the like that they're happy for the minutes to be distributed beyond the members of the committee. So I get what council's trying to do, but they're not our committees. So I don't know that you can actually say you will distribute them because you may not necessarily be able to distribute some of those meeting minutes.
Councillor Hill?
I guess just while we continue wordsmithing this lovely joint dot point from all of us, maybe the wording could be that the delegate and/or alternate delegate for committees provide minutes, provide the official minutes or a councillor report back to council where suitable in relation to the committee.
Okay. Can we just take a minute, councillors, just to check that wording? Could all have a look at our screens and have a look at that and see if we're all happy with that? Any further discussion on that particular amendment? Okay. A second for that amendment? Oh, Hill, sorry, councillor Hill and Groine's fine. Yep. Okay. Okay, motion, the men will be put. So now vote on that particular matter? All those in favour? It's unanimous? And moving on to report CC67/2024. Council's internal committee structure and appointments of representatives. So would anyone like to move that motion? Councillor Hill, speaking?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'd like to move the recommendation as written just to change the details within the table under point three, which will allow us to sort of nominate our delegates to these committees. I'm happy to read through that there for the benefit of the gallery and those watching. The committee being the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Advisory Committee. I would nominate the council members councillor Mitchell Hill, councillor Sophie Palmoski and councillor Chris Madden to be members and councillor Mitchell Lee as an alternate. I would nominate for the Audit and Risk Improvement Committee councillor Mark Mason, who would be a non-voting member of the committee and councillor Quinton King as an alternate member to that committee. For the council-initiated awards committee, I would nominate Mayor Daniel Watten as the default chairperson. Councillor Tracy Harrington as a member and councillor Rosa Groine as a member, including councillor Sarah Pascoe and councillor Jay Savell as alternates. For the floodplain risk management committee, I would nominate councillor, sorry, Mayor Daniel Watten as the default chair and councillor Mitchell Lee as a committee member and councillor Mark Mason as an alternate. For the grants advisory committee, I would nominate councillor Daniel Watten as the default chair, councillor Sarah Pascoe as a member and councillor Jay Savell and including councillor Tracy Harrington and councillor Jessica Jerd as alternates. For the local traffic committee, I would nominate councillor Jessica Jerd as the delegate and chair of that meeting and councillor Quinton King as the alternate delegate. And for the general managers' organisational and general managers' performance review panel, I would nominate councillor Rosa Groine as council's delegate and councillor Sarah Pascoe as council's alternate.
Have someone a second that motion? Councillor Groine, open up for a discussion? Director?
Thank you. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, councillor Hill. In relation to the audit risk improvement committee, the charter as set out in legislation only allows one councillor member to it. All councillors are able to attend, but you can only actually have a non-voting council member of the committee. So you can't have an alternate councillor.
Thank you, Director. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just noticed that I haven't been put on any of the committees. And I just wonder if we could make an amendment if one of the other councillors didn't mind stepping back on the flood management, that that was a committee that I was wanting to be on?
Councillor Savile?
I was happy to step back on grants if you were interested in that one. Otherwise, I'm not on the flood one.
So councillor Dixon, which committee in particular were you interested in?
I wanted to be on the flood management committee. Floodplain management committee. So it's either Mitchell Lee or Mark Mason. If one of them would agree to step back so I could take their place.
Okay, councillor Lee?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm quite keen to stay on that one. They've experienced background qualifications in emergency and disaster management. And being a Ward C councillor, I think the people of Weston and Abermain and through Crater and Brinkston as well have been quite affected by flooding over the years. They're quite keen to stay a part of that one.
Councillor Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy for councillor Dix. Sorry, happy for councillor Dixon to take my spot.
Councillor, councillors Savile?
I just had a question of the, probably the director of corporate and community. In the last term of council, the general manager and/or their delegate were appointed to a lot of these committees. Are they still required to be? So the ones that would be would be the grants advisory and the council-initiated awards committee. I believe also appointed the general manager and/or their delegate. The other committees, I don't believe, require it. And if so, yeah, I'd be happy to move to add that.
Director?
Thank you. The elections tonight is the councillor members of that committee. I believe that the charters of those individual committee has the general manager and/or delegate as standing members of some of these committees, not all of them. Tonight is about the councillors electing their representatives to it. And obviously the general manager or their delegate is appointed by the general manager.
Thank you, Director. Any further discussion? Just take a moment just to review that just before we move on. Not to rush through this. So we swapped out councillor Mason for councillor Dixon? So councillors Savile?
I was just going to ask, did councillor Dixon also want to look at the grants committee or was that?
Councillor Dixon?
I'd be happy to do that as well if there's space for me to go on that committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the grants committee, we'll put councillor Dixon in place of councillor Savile? Can I have the mover and the second of that particular motion? Are they happy with that? So councillor Hill, councillor Groine, move the second of that motion. You're happy? Okay. No further discussion? Now put the motion forward for a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Now move on to report number CC68/2024. The schedule of ordinary meetings of council for 2025. Speaking councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I knew I'd do it once, sorry. I'd like to move the recommendation as written.
Can I have a second, please? Councillor Lee? Speaking councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Just like, if we could seek some consultation around what day would suit the council staff and councillors. For example, if we move the council meeting date to Monday, then we give the council staff an opportunity to action any items that were raised on the Monday night meeting and close them out that week if possible.
Director?
Thank you. In relation to the timing of meetings, the code of meeting practice which council will be looking at next week sets out that meetings are normally held on a Wednesday. So if you're looking to change all the meetings to a Monday, you would need to address that by the code of meeting practice in relation to timing for staff and the like. I think a Monday is probably more problematic than a midweek meeting just due to occasionally public holidays and the like generally fall on a Monday or a Friday. So I don't see any benefit in relation to that. But certainly when the council is considering the code of meeting practice, which talks about our frequency and timing of meetings, you could have those conversation pieces. But I think it's a bit hard to say off the top of my head that a Monday would be better than a Wednesday. I hope that answers your question.
Councillor Jerd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's through you, a question for the Director of Corporate and Community Services. If we were to change it to a Monday, which I'm not in favour of, because I've done three years on a Wednesday, I definitely wouldn't turn up on Monday, I would forget. That would mean we'd have less days with our papers, wouldn't it?
Director?
Thank you. If you were looking to change the. Thank you. If you were looking to change the code of meeting practice and change the date, that would change the timing in relation to the, the business paper preparation. It would just mean that the, that would all be brought backwards or forwards depending on the date. So at the moment, for a Wednesday night meeting, we provide the councillors with the business papers the previous Wednesday. If you're looking at a Monday, you would then be providing the council with those papers on the previous Monday. But there is that weekend in the middle as well, which in the, in the business paper preparation process, it would sort of, I won't say it will upset it, it'll just change the timings in it, so.
Sorry councillor Jerd?
Sorry. It would make it hard to, those last minute questions to get them answered. I think if we changed it because of the weekend, like you just said.
Potentially is the answer to that. There'd be a lot to look at. I think it's just the timing of when, when things are prepared and when they're sent out and the like. So that would be the biggest issue. But what date that you pick, councils across the state have varying times and dates for their meetings. So whether it's a Monday or a Wednesday or a Tuesday or whatever it will be, we would address it in the appropriate fashion through the code of meeting practice.
Thank you, Director. Councillor Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. Yeah, if the papers were, were sent out the Friday, ten days previously, that would give us two full weekends to actually look at those papers. We go into the weekend before the meeting and then it's all fresh in our mind on that Monday night.
Thank you. So just with that, was that a, a question? A statement? Okay. Any further discussion? Let's take one moment to look at that. Okay, we'll now vote on this matter. All in favour? Councillor Grine, Harrington, Hill, Jerd, King, Lee, Palmauski, Pascoe, Saval and Watten. Those against? Councillor Madden and Mason, motion is carried. Oh, sorry. Councillor Dixon? I'll have to set up a bit higher. I think the monitors are so high. No. We'll get used to that. Report CC six nine. Moving on to the next matter, CC six nine slash twenty twenty four. It's the Local Government, New South Wales Annual Conference, delegates and voting delegates. Has someone to move that way? Councillor Hill, speaking?
Thank you, Mayor Watten. I'd like to move, the recommendation is written with changes to include the names of councillors. Will be that one, council determines the delegates to attend the Local Government, New South Wales Annual Conference twenty twenty four as Mayor Daniel Watten. And the councillor Mitchell Hill. Councillor Jay Saval. And councillor Palmoski. And for point two, that council determines the voting delegates for the Local Government, New South Wales Annual Conference twenty twenty four as Mayor Daniel Watten, councillor Mitchell Hill, councillor Jay Saval and councillor Sophie Palmoski. And I'd like to add, if I can, a third point to include that council determines councillor Chris Madden to be an alternate delegate in the event that any councillor is unable to attend the conference.
Someone to second please? Councillor Lee? Any further discussion? No debate? Now put this to a vote. All in favour? It's unanimous? Well, that was the final meeting matter of business. I'll now declare the.